Nineteenth of Allegheny County Board of Commissioners. If you all will stand, we'll say the pledge allegiance, then we'll have the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands before our nation. Amen. Your God, indivisible, et in justus for all.
Precious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for another time to come together, Lord. Lord, we just ask for wisdom and direction and guidance, and ask Jesus to find favor in all things that we do. Lord, I ask the Lord to bless everyone here this morning, and Lord, let us go forth to do as you'd have us to do, in thy name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. You say it. The first order of business, we need approval of the agenda as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
One more second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carriers, five oh. Next item is motion on the minutes from a work session on six five, and then a regular meeting on six five. I need a motion and a second, unless there's any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carries, five oh. First item of business is public comments. Anybody, you've got three minutes to speak. Anybody would like to speak? Now's your chance.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for having public comment. Is that what you wanted me to do? Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for serving. I appreciate it. What I'm here about is, quite frankly, there was a timeline that I didn't get done in time, so I'm just going to make an announcement. My dad turned ninety this past week, and he's done a lot of stuff that's been advantageous to the county. So we're going to try to celebrate his birthday on July the fourth during the fireworks time, and we're going to serve watermelon, and we hope that you all will come, and this is a way to invite everybody to come by and see him at the watermelon cutting and the fireworks. They are going to have the fireworks behind the school like they normally do. I did call and check on it with the construction that's going on, and we no longer have the parking place since we've got the great building that Napco's put in, but we will be able to do that. And thank you all for all you do. I appreciate it very much.
Hey, thank you.
See you later. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Come ahead. Just state your name.
Good morning. I'm Mark Cottle. My mother passed away in October after the will was dispersed, the land was divided. They had had it in a forestry, and we, the partial I got only had twenty, eleven acres, and they require twenty. They went back three years plus interest for taxes. That was a big burden on me, and I feel that since they had it in forestry, it shouldn't be a burden on myself.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else on public comments? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this section. Thank you. Under item A is a consent agenda. We have that in our packets, pages six through thirteen. Reader, is there anything you need to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carriers, five oh. Go to section B, presentation to the board, finance update, this April.
Good morning.
Morning.
I passed out the finance report to everyone just before the meeting. Year-to-date revenue, nineteen million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and six cents. That represents five percent of the estimated amount. I'm going to stop a minute. Year-to-date expenditures, seventeen million, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. That represents ninety-two percent of the estimated expenditures, and of course, the approved budget for this fiscal year was eighteen million, four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. And we're ninety-six percent into the current fiscal year budget, so we're almost to the end of the budget. Bank balance as of today, in the checking account, thirteen million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. In the public savings account, we have five million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-five cents, with a total of eighteen million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And then I do have the bank balance for you from a year ago and two years ago. Net financials taken to account, the revenue and expenditures, two point three million, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and seven cents to date. Any questions on the finance report?
Go ahead. No questions.
Okay.
Michael?
I just have a comment, if I may. Everyone knows that the bulk of the revenues come in during August and September timeframe, so we get those revenues in early, and that's what we basically live on for the remainder of the year. What I want to say, with two weeks left in June, it's like pretty good estimates for the budget, and I don't want to put April on the spot, but I will. The net financials of this year, do you recall at this time last year what the net financials were?
This time last year?
That's the part I like. I like it when she...
It, going by memory, I think it was around three million, but that's going by memory. And we do have, I'll, since you put me on the spot, we do have two more months of sales tax to come in also, so the sales tax that I'm going to report this morning is April, so we still have May and June to come in also.
What I'm getting at is it appears on the surface, and keep in mind, we have another two weeks, and we have what I call put-back timeframes for things that come in after the close of the fiscal year that have to be applied back. It looks like we're going to be fairly close to the same type of report from last year.
Thank you.
I'll be more prepared next time. I'm good, if the board's good.
Nothing like him putting you on the spot.
Nothing like that. Okay. So your second page is the report on the sales tax. Year-to-date, one million, ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-four cents, as compared to this time last year, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. So that's about one hundred and fifty-three thousand more than this time last year on sales tax. And then the last page is the local option sales tax. We have received one hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents, and that number right below that is actually what we received for April, the thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. So any questions or comments?
Comments? Nothing to put her on the spot, Mr. Carter?
I'm just figuring, if that holds true, we're looking at about another two hundred thousand dollars on sales tax for those two remaining months.
That would be my estimate, too.
So you can figure that in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under, let's see, the item two, facilities update, David.
Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this day to give you an update and report. I want to start with our administration building. As you've seen, when you come in, we're doing some painting to the door frames in this building. Also had to make a repair to the HVAC system in the tax and tag office last Friday, which got their AC unit back going, so this is positive things. Our transfer facility, our temporary tipping floor is really looking good. The floor itself is finished, so we're looking at, hopefully this week, depending, I guess, on the weather as to whether we get it completed this week or not. There's a fence that's got to be put up, and a tank that's got to be put in, so just a few odd and end things, just to finish up on that, so we should have our temporary tipping floor in good shape here shortly. Co-mingle, we had four point oh nine tons. Cardboard, we had four point one three tons. Scrap metal, we had three loads at eleven point six five tons, which yielded two thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty cents for the county. We've also installed a stop arm, which we had told everybody that we was going to, and that is working out well, so our stop arm is up going and working as it should. Ninety South Main, if you've come by there lately, you can see some progress outside. The rock works done, most of the, well, the concrete, all the concrete is poured. They still like putting in the paving brick, they still like paving the parking lot and driveway part of it. The flagpole still needs to be put up, and we are waiting on the metal that goes on the front of the building and the windows, so those things will come in hopefully this week, and we'll be able to progress with that and move right along. The wall is up in soil and water, it's not completed just yet. We do have the flooring in, so as soon as that can be coordinated, we're going to coordinate that and get the flooring put down, and all of that will be in good shape in soil and water. The building is ready to be occupied as soon as we get those things done, so that's coming real soon. The BDC, we've painted the cement portion of the post out front for the parking lot lights. Those have been painted yellow so people can see them. We've been having some, I guess, some folks that have not been aware of those things there and has damaged their vehicles, but those are painted yellow now, so that removes those things. We're still waiting on the delivery of the skylight for the college side. It's not leaking as of now, but we have a new skylight ordered, so that should be coming in very soon, and then we have a leak, I understand, today at the library, so I've sent some folks up there to check on that before the rain comes in, so we can hopefully have that eliminated. The new truck for EMS is pretty much near completion, so they was hoping it would come off the line and be completed Friday. I don't think that happened. I think it'll be midweek this week, so that's coming along, and I'll share, I'll try to share some pictures with you and let you see what the truck looks like with all the lettering and graphics on it, so I'll share those with you shortly. We had a workday Friday over at DSS. First, I'd like to thank everyone that came and participated in that. There was a lot of work that went on Friday there, a lot of painting and floor scraping and all kinds of things that happened over there Friday, and everyone that came fell right in and found a place to do something and worked and did really well, and we had some good fellowship, so that was a positive plus. So thank you all for coming and helping at DSS. Animal control, we have, we had forty-four calls, a hundred and thirty-two hours, and seven hundred and ten miles. So there was eight calls assisting the Sheriff's Department, two of dogs and livestock, five well checks, five dogs and cats that were picked up, seven running at large, had nine attacks, nine quarantines, and we set six traps, six traps, which five of those were yielded as pickups. The other one, we could not catch anything in the other trap. So a hundred and thirty-two hours, forty-four calls, and seven hundred and ten miles. Also have, at the request of the board and the county, is we have had buildings heating in our, going out to the Black Building, and to research items for heat as we need additional heating at the Black Building. So I have three different prices for these things to be accomplished. Two of them, two of them would be forced air units, which would be able to, if the county ever deemed necessary, to be able to hook air conditioning to. The other one would be a radiant tube heater. These range from the, the one which I would recommend is, is two units that would be overhead in the ceiling with duck work throughout the attic and would be an even heat source for that, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The radiant tube heaters locked in the maintenance shop is sixty-five hundred dollars, which would be two radiant heaters. The third option is a forced air, which would be a unit at each end of the building, and would have to build a closet around those, that's eighty-two hundred dollars. As I said, I would recommend the, the unit that is overhead with the spiral duck work, and this would be a more evenly distributed heat source and be better for everybody all the way around, and everything would be in the attic space and not exposed so that it's not a sightly thing. It's just something that you hear and something that you feel. So those, that's just for information, and we'll be looking into that in the near future to maybe have something done about that. We are or will be in the process of, Randy, I think, is going to produce an application for the TDA, and the TDA hopefully will help and assist us in paying for this unit so that it won't cost to count anything. That's all I have, and if you have any questions, certainly I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions?
To the point, David, we're going to have to put a full-time dog catcher on, anyway?
Yes, it does, it does sort of hinder.
Any other questions? Mr. Carter, any comments? Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Okay, that includes the presentations to the board. Next is item C, general business. These items are for information only, and at this time, it's, item one is the BDC contract, Commissioner John Irwin, pages fourteen through seventeen.
John? In previous meetings, we've been advised that BDC would be working with the county manager. The question is, have we had those meetings yet, Mr. Carter?
There has been one meeting that I have been involved with, with the BDC, which, the BDC Board, which I reported on a month or two ago. The indication at that meeting was that they would, would like to invite me back for a meeting sometime in June, but to my knowledge, that has not occurred yet.
Indications are that Commissioner Lufman has comments in this regard. I will yield my time for her.
We did meet on June fifteenth. You were out of town with your, with your wife during that time, but we met at that time, and we stood in recess pending on what the desire of this board is toward the BDC. So we will, you know, we're, we're asking what this board desires to happen with the BDC. We're prepared to take action based on, we plan to meet again.
Day this week?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman, I believe that the county commissioners made it evident that they wanted to assume control and not renew the contract as of one October. Now, the question that comes up, are we going to have to, are we, must we form an enterprise like we do with the transfer facility? That's a legal question I think we're going to have to face on that. Even at that, it's just a gut feeling, because basically, the county will be conducting business. Once we take it over, we're renting places out and things of that nature, so I will take the advice and counsel of our learned counsel on that.
Not sure, haven't looked into that, so that's something that, it was all pending what was going to end up happening, whether we were renewing or not, and we decided not to renew, so how that was going to transition. So at this point, if we're at that point, then I can certainly determine how we'll have to move forward with that, and then work with the county manager for something that we can use going forward with the board and how this potentially would operate.
Chair, I would recommend that we get the feeling of the other commissioners, whether we're going to renew the contract or not, so that we know a definite in that regard.
Mr. Carter, I know that you've been thinking about this, the whole board has, you know, for several months now. Do, you need to work with our legal counsel on coming up with some type of contract with the county? What's your next step? What do you foresee?
The first step, if the consensus of the board, and I, I will wait till the consensus of the board is known, the first thing we need to look at is what arrangements or agreements are in place with those that inhabit those spaces at this time, because I, I know nothing about any of that process. To short answer you, yes, I think there's a process that if the consensus of the board is to assume the operations, I think there is a process that Heather and I and some others will likely be involved in to work this transition out.
I think with Michelle's comments, do you have another comment? Go ahead.
I do. You know, I personally am concerned about the, that there's, there's no economic development plan or strategy going forward. That's very concerning. If a community doesn't have a plan to grow, then you tend to die, and, you know, we have the Chamber of Commerce, who is not very well supported in the budget, we have Economic Development Group, and we have the BDC Board, and it just seems like that we're not, we're not moving forward, and we have, you know, economic development means a lot of things. It means, you know, growth for our children here, it means jobs, it means housing, you know, it means a thriving community, and that does concern me. You know, if the board does move to go ahead and take over operations of that building, you know, we would suggest that it would be, it would be right to do by the tenants to not, you know, increase their rent until the end of the year. That's, that just seems like a good thing. And then at that, at that time, maybe have a very modest increase, because, you know, this is not meant to be some cash cow, and it's not a cash cow for the county. It's meant to provide a place where small business can come and do business in a, in a very good, safe environment, and the economics are intangible. These people come into town, I think there's seventy, they buy food, they buy gas, money back into the community, a lot of intangibles, but we're willing to go with whatever the direction of the board is and make it a smooth transition anyway, if that's what the...
My feelings in this regard is, one, we do not renew the contract. Two, that we set up a mechanism for supervising the BDC, and I would also recommend, and agreeing with Commissioner Lufman, that we have an adjunct position where that person is in charge of economic development. I've been in contact with a gentleman that is retired economic developer. He has found retirement life is not what he thought it was going to be, and he is willing to work part-time. This falls right in, because supervision of the BDC is minimal requirements, then he could also use his contacts if we decide we want to go with this. Now, based on that, I would recommend that the county assume responsibility for the operation of the BDC, no changes. Hire a managing director slash workforce developer, so that we could dual hat that individual, and indeed have someone that is working on economic development in this county. Now, I will remind the people that we have the Allegheny County Economic Development Committee that did not meet for fourteen years, twelve, fourteen years until I brought it up, and then all of a sudden, they became active, but there's eighty-five thousand dollars sitting in that account. This is money where the group home has been paying back a loan that they got from them. Nobody knows anything about it, but that money is sitting there. We know that the BDC is sitting on over two hundred, over quarter of a million dollars, so that money is sitting there. One thing about... One thing about money, I could pile it in that, in the center of this room, and if I don't utilize it, it's not gonna grow. That money, we can certainly start a hiring without raising the rent. We can hire someone as a manager, supervisor, and economic developer. They, there are people out there, I believe Commissioner Irwin, Bobby Irwin, said he had someone that was interested, also a former economic developer. There is talent out there, we can get this thing going, we can put it in operation. The Chamber of Commerce is no longer interested in economic development? We've, I agree, we've got to get someone in here that will make this county attractive. There are people out there that can utilize the services that we've got. We've got great infrastructure with the fiber optic that's been brought in here, that bandwidth is there, let's utilize it. But before we do that, it's gonna take a consensus of this board, working with the attorney and the county manager to determine the direction that we're gonna go with it. If we're gonna go and we're not gonna do anything with it, we don't need to change anything, but I am all for.
Thank you, Michelle.
I did want to bring up that we have been in the middle of a process that has kind of been ongoing. We were talking about spending some of that BDC money on a security update for college, the library. That would include doors, new keypads, new wiring. Wills Community College is concerned about the security up there, rightfully so. There's very little, if, if, if anything, so to be able to keep the safety safe. The other thing is that we would like to maintain a 501(c)(3) status. We can be dormant for a year with no issues. You know, they used to hand out 501(c)(3)'s kinda like candy in the past, but now they're pretty difficult to get, I think you could probably justify my statement on that. But we can't leave the board actually intact, it could be dormant to be able to maintain our 501(c)(3) status. Something came up, we've talked about that.
Just a comment, I find it amazing, we've got a pile of money that's been sitting there, but all of a sudden the county's gonna take control over it, and we've got plans to spend it.
Those plans have been going on for six months. We've been talking to Scotty Call and Mike Wengler of Wills Community College, and, you know, it involved a survey, it involved, it involved a site study, David has been involved in that, Daniel Rotten has been involved in that. I mean, things like that just don't happen overnight, it's been a month.
Mr. Carter, I, I think what you've asked for is a consensus of this board, if we're willing to take over the BDC, I would assume that date would be at the end of the contract or would it be sooner?
July first.
That would be July the first, that's, that's just right around the corner, but is that your request that the board come to a consensus, that the county is willing to take over the BDC management?
The short answer is yes, but, you know, there's a lot of things to go into play in between now and July one, and I don't mean this the wrong way, but I think we've, we've kinda waited around until we get close to the ninety-day notice date to get to this point. I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying that two weeks, it's two weeks.
Let me, let me alleviate that. I think that the BDC Board would be willing to work through that until September first, if that would be helpful to the county, because we want it to be a smooth transition.
I just, I'm not pressuring you either way, I'm, I'm just identifying things, but if the county is going to assume the operations, that needs to be known. We, we don't need to dance around it anymore, we need to make it known, if that's what you wanna do, and let's proceed, and if it's not what you wanna do, same feedback.
So what I'm gathering?
I think we just need to put on a, we need to just put on an agenda and vote what we're gonna do. I'm in favor of taking it over.
Okay.
I don't want to throw nobody out, or we won't keep them in there.
Yeah, I know we're talking about taking over the, I mean, not renewing the contract, but it's my understanding the BDC don't want to renew the contract, is that correct?
We want to do what this board wants us to do. I think it's valuable to stay intact, but that's the, it's the desire of the board.
Well, I'm like Michael, two weeks is not enough time if we do do this, and the other thing is, we don't really need to turn Michael's office into a landlord business, so we gotta figure out how we need to do that, so I'm okay with, you know, trying to restructure that in a different way, seems to be maybe a smarter way of doing it. So yeah, consensus on my part is if, if like that may be there, like it's not. But, B two, you gotta have time to work through and see who always got rent through a certain time, and then once you get through to all that kinda stuff and figure out where everybody stands on that, then you can start talking about rent stuff and how that works and how that needs to be structured.
Okay, I think we're looking at a transition period between possibly when Mr. Carter and our legal counsel can come up with some proposed contract, and I think that what Michelle's saying, the BDC Board would stay as active as needed till first of September.
Yeah, I mean, we would give, we have to give notice, you know, by July first anyway, so we would give notice and then we would be out by September first.
Is that first of September or fit your timetable or?
Mr. Chair, why, why are we talking September the first? We have a contract with them until one October.
October first.
September the thirtieth.
September the thirtieth, we're fine.
Yeah, that, that works better. You mentioned Heather and I working on an agreement, and Heather and I are sitting there wondering what agreement are you talking about?
So you need to come up with a basic plan on how the BDC is to be run and present that to the board for approval, is that what you're saying?
That's not what I'm saying, I think that's what you're saying. What, what I'm saying is, there, there should be, there's not an agreement that Heather and I need to work on. All Heather and I need to, in my opinion, look at is once we can obtain the leases that are in current, we just need to have those in possession so that we can utilize those. If you're asking me to have a plan put together in, in the next month and month and a half, whatever it is that the timeframe falls, to operate and maintain the BDC, then yes, I can do that, but you, you kinda threw us when you were talking about an agreement, because there shouldn't be an agreement that I know of outside of the current lease agreements for the tenants.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think the only legal question that is out there is, do we need to set up an enterprise? Once that question is answered, then we will know the mechanism that we're gonna have to follow through to take over the actual control of the facility, but the way it's gonna be run, that's a separate, that is a separate issue that I'm sure the county manager has some thoughts that, on what he would like to do and how he would like to do it. I would encourage him to include an economic developer responsibility in there, because we are, that, that is a big void that this county has at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, I'm just looking at a calendar on down the road. September, our first meeting in September is, that is Labor Day, so we will be moving that meeting. Do you foresee having a plan in place by the fifth of September that you could present to the board, or is this something we need to possibly look at, at a special work session before the September meeting?
With the discussion that has taken place thus far this morning, I think a work session would be a great opportunity prior to presenting a plan of operations, because honestly, there's no use in putting a plan together and having it shot out of pieces. If we can have a work session prior to and take a lot of the shots, put those into a streamlined plan, it should be a smoother operation.
So as of right now, the only thing you need from the board, and I think we already have it, is a consensus for you to proceed with a plan to take over the management of the BDC building.
Need to turn me loose.
So I ask, is there a consensus for the county manager to proceed with this, and then he would present some information at a work session in the near future?
Yes.
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 Do we not need to vote, we're gonna take over the BDC first, or?
We gotta, need a plan.
Don't need to put on an agenda, to vote, we're gonna take it over?
He's just asking for a consensus.
Action consensus.
You have a consensus of the agenda, a majority of the board members for you to proceed.
So do you wanna have that work session at the September meeting, or do you wanna do it prior to that, that would be the fifth?
I would say, I would say for you to set the date for the work session, depending on your progress of your report, of your recommendations.
September fifth?
Yes.
For your information, we will be calling a meeting this week, we're in recess with the BDC Board right now.
Greg, any other follow-up? Timmy? Okay, so we're set on that? Okay, thank you, we'll move to the next item, number two, update on the code of ethics change, changes, John Irwin.
Mr. Chair, I was able to speak with the county manager briefly prior to the meeting, and he had advised that with the work that they have been doing on the personnel changes and the other areas that we have placed on him, they had not had a chance to start on that. Now we've put additional responsibilities on him. I would request that we table this until the October meeting.
October.
October, first.
Or second?
Second meeting in October.
We have a recommendation to table Item Two to the second meeting in October. At the, for consensus, is that okay with the board?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, we'll table second meeting in October. Anything else, John?
That's it.
Thank you. Veterans Park update, Eric Hamilton. How are you?
Good, good morning. Just a couple of quick updates. Veterans Park stream restoration, last week we got our trout waiver, so we are fully permitted. We still do have an anticipated start date of mid-October to late October due to the bat mortarium that we're in. Yeah, don't hold your head. The other update I've got on is the American chestnut trees, come before you, a month and a half or so ago. Did get with Robert Overbay with the Veterans Committee, met with you also, Bobby, everybody was fine with where they're planted, they have been put in, and we'll keep monitoring, make sure everything's good with them.
There's two of them that we're, that we're planting.
If you're looking at the Bavarian picnic side, they're to the left, right there on the edge of the woods, you can't miss them.
So do you sort of explain the area that the bats might be in?
There'll be, they can roost in any crevices, any of the trees that are along Veterans Park, if you notice, on the upper end, there's a pretty good bend, with this steep bank on the other side, it's got a large white oak, I believe, on the far side, that reaches across, it's got a lot of crevices in it, just about any of the trees down through there, they rest, they roost and nest in the crevices, so that's what they're wanting to stop is, they don't want us dropping any trees that's got any spots where they roost in it, and after October they'll stop and we can continue with the work.
Is that area sort of in back of the monument?
Yes, it's in, all we're looking at is along the creek, along the stream, along Wetso Creek.
Just on the stream?
Yes.
And?
Roughly twenty feet on each side.
Twenty feet on each side?
Any of the, any of the trees that are gonna be in the area where construction's gonna take place, that's what they're monitoring. You're welcome, any other questions?
Any other questions? Michelle?
Did you hand out long trees last week? I saw you at the farmer's market.
We did, I can't tell you the exact number that we got, roughly probably around eight to ten thousand, and out of the eight to ten thousand, we might have fifteen hundred to two thousand left over. So it's been very popular the last two years. Forestry Service of Virginia, that's leftovers from all their stuff, they donate to the county, then we bring them over here and hand them out. We had everything from oaks to shrubs, just all kinds of things.
Any comments or questions, Michael? I think we're, that helped on the bats, I mean, that, some people, you know.
We've got two, at least two species of bats endangered that they think are in this area. You've also got the bog turtle that lives in the wetlands down there, those are all endangered species, so, you know, we're, a lot of red tape we're going through.
I think though, that it does help to clarify that it was along the, the stream bank, twenty feet left or right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything else we're not gonna mess with.
Thank you.
Ah, thank you.
Okay, let's see. Appalachian health opioid grant, looks like Jennifer Green. Soon to be Dr. Green.
I have, you have me instead of Lindsay this morning, she sends her regrets, but she was in Ash County presenting about the same information, so we decided to divide and conquer. Just wanna say thank you, and we have an update for your information today on the opioid settlement project. As you all recall, we worked together to launch a grant application, and so if you go to the next slide, I'm sort of sad to report that App Healthcare was the only applicant that submitted a grant. I have some theories around this that I hope you'll listen to. I think part of this means that we need to work on really deliberate strategic planning, which has been part of our discussion from the beginning. That would bring in more participation from agencies. I do want you all to know, we've had good participation in terms of identifying problems, having discussions about what's needed. I think it's just a really big area to cover, and that's probably what's kept more people from applying. So if you go to the next slide, the proposal that was submitted from App Healthcare was for a mobile health outreach program. This was for a partial investment, the total cost of which is going to be over four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. This proposal was actually submitted to Watauga and Allegheny, Ash County as well as Allegheny, and then we are planning to submit a grant to HERSA to pay for the difference in the cost. What this has to do with opioid work is, what we believe is that we're, we're seeing some people in our clinic that need people in our clinic that need support for medication-assisted treatment. But we believe there's also people in the community that we're not seeing, that may have a mental health problem, that may have a substance use problem that's under detected, or that they just don't have access to healthcare. And so the vision is really to have a mobile unit that can actually go out in the more rural parts of the community and serve patients regardless of their ability to pay and their insurance status. So that's really the goal here, and that's what the project actually outlined. If you go to the next slide, Drew. So one of the things that we know is really important in this investment is to make sure that we measure success. And so these are some proposed measurements that we've included to date as part of what the project would include. And that would be, you know, the number of people reached. Naloxone, of course, is an important reversal drug that we know is over the counter, but is also, really, we need to do a better job of trying to get that more broadly distributed in the community. So we've got the other things, satisfaction surveys that we would collect, the number of individuals that we reach that are referred to treatment, which could include referring to ourselves, or they may have multiple substances that they're using and they may need to be referred elsewhere. So we've got all of these measures outlined, as well as some testimonials. If you all recall, we do have a peer support specialist, John Simmons, who's here in the county, and he is a very passionate person that is also trying to connect us, and has some really good insight about where we might locate this mobile outreach focus. One of the things I didn't mention is, you know, one of the things we do when we do medication-assisted treatment is drug screening. It's important to know if someone that you're treating has had any other substances, and this would allow us to have a bathroom facility included on the bus so that we would be able to do those screenings as we are treating people. If you go to the next slide, Drew. This is what was discussed previously in a prior presentation. As you all remember, this was the amount through the spring of 2023. And thanks to Heather, because she's helped to keep us straight on a lot of the details around what you, where you all are. The Harm Reduction Vital Strategies Grant is one that we talked about previously, and you all provided us a lot of support. That project is actually underway. We are, we've hired an additional peer support specialist, and we are finalizing hiring of a health educator for that project. We'll also include more distribution of Narcan. That's in addition to what I just described. We believe we're going to need to do some more investment in strategic planning, like I mentioned, with the focus being to try to identify other projects that the county feels is important, including, you know, maybe trying to have some other recommendations to bring to the commissioners for other projects, funding that would go to other agencies or other initiatives that, that the group feels is important. So this is what is here for your information today, and I believe we're going to plan to come back at a future meeting for action. If you come to the next slide, Drew. So the next thing would be for us to actually come to you all back, I think July 3rd is your next meeting? Is that when? No. 17th, thank you. So July 17th would be when we would come back. And then, of course, the other part that we're doing for all of our counties is making sure that every dot, every I is dotted, every T is crossed in terms of the DHHS role of reviewing the proposal, to making sure that there's everything that they would include that's needed so that when we get ready to submit the information from the county that the state has approved all of the projects that are invested in. And so this is sort of what our, our next step of the proposal is, is just to consider this as one main proposal in addition to doing some really thoughtful strategic planning into the fall. And then that would help us identify additional projects. As you all know, you're getting more funds, I assume, this summer. And then that would allow you to identify some other projects and what methods you might want to use to, to fund them. So I will be happy to answer questions. Did I miss anything? No? Okay.
Questions? Michelle, go ahead.
Not really a question, but a comment. I think that's a great use of that money to go out. And for the future, I would suggest, you know, some focus on counseling, certainly is after care, a lot of after care resources in this county. So people coming out of treatment, they fall back in.
The recovery support is what you mean? Yeah, yeah, I think you're right about that.
Questions? Timmy? Drew, could you go back to the slide of the mobile unit? Okay, thank you. Is, now the mobile unit will travel for what, three, over three counties?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Does, you know, I don't know if you've worked out all the plans, but I just remember in the times past when I think some of the mobile dental clinics, we had to have special electric plug-ins when you went someplace. Is this going to have, be a problem, or?
Well, I think it's going to be important for us to consider. We've, we've talked with some other counties that are, health departments that are doing the similar work. And what I think we're going to need to do is, obviously, we're going to need to get bids for different types of setups. The ones that we've looked at, they will need some hookups, but they also have Wi-Fi available on there. I mean, as good as that is in some areas, I'll say. But yeah, there's an onboard generator, there's a water tank that's on there. So it can work that way, but that would be the ideal scenario is that we figure out places where it can be hooked up for a temporary period of time. And I think what we're picturing is that we have a routine so people can expect it. So it's not just a random here, there, and everywhere, but there's promotion of the actual time to expect it. And that way, you can sort of plan on it. People can tell their friends and family and neighbors. And, and really, I think this could be a really great outreach. We hope to have lots of people involved in helping us with it.
Be a schedule sort of like the old mobile library book that used to travel around?
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, I think about how many food trucks we see around. I mean, if you can imagine, there's lots of promotion around things like that. We could do something similar.
John, question?
Just to put a bug in your ear.
Yes.
Make sure that you get it on the Allegheny Community TV.
Yes.
There's your schedule.
Absolutely.
And get it out to the county. That's a underutilized source here.
It's a great resource. That's a, that's a great addition, yes. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. No action on this, Mr. Chairman? Next item is Section D, general business. These items are for action. First up is County Manager Michael Carter about the Appalachian Health Building Inspection waiver fees.
Chairman, members of the board, if you recall at your last meeting, we had a discussion about this, and it is estimated that these inspection fees will be somewhere in the $3,500 to $4,000 range. We remind the board that the county does own this facility. The improvements are being made to that facility, which you own. There, there is opportunity to redirect those funds if they are considered to be waived to add to the project. And I know there's been some conversation about that, but as it is a county-owned building, I still, I still am behind the fact of recommending that the board consider waiving those building inspection fees.
Questions? Comments? I just echo what the county manager said. It's our own buildings that we're waiving our fees to ourselves, so.
Motion to waive the fees.
Reinvest it.
Motion to waive.
Got a motion in a second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries 5-0, thank you. Item two is Tax Office Certified Letter, Rita Miller for Jackie May.
Good morning.
Just a minute before you start, I would like the board to know that, that I've talked to Ms. May, she cannot be here at this meeting today, and she had requested if there was any, any possibility to put it off till our next meeting. And I told her that this was on the, on the agenda for action. So I just wanted you to know about that discussion. Rita, go ahead.
Okay, so Missy's handing out to you kind of a timeline of what got us here today, and I'll review that, and then I'll answer any questions you may have. So February the 17th of '21, a GAAP bill was mailed to the taxpayer. And a GAAP bill is a bill for vehicle registration, a time when the vehicle did not have an active registration on it. The information to send those bills comes from Department of Revenue. And then in 2022, there was a delinquent GAAP bill notice to the address on file 2023. The garnishment notice was sent to the taxpayer, and the $30 fee, which is what is under appeal, was added. Taxpayer came in, paid the tax amount showing on the form, and did, did not want to pay the attachment fee at that time. One thing that came out at the last meeting, I wanted to clarify, the employer listed on that garnishment form was not served. So that employer was not served. And they were not served because the fee was under appeal. I did talk to Ms. May on May the 30th, and she explained about the time she had worked at that employer, things that had been happening with her that may have caused her to overlook this bill. I explained that when we have a delinquent bill, so I'll run a, I'll run a report of all delinquent bills, and I start researching ways to collect that money. And one of those is looking at the employment security website. And if we identify one of those people, then I give those to my deputy tax collector with the, you know, to go ahead and send this out. We don't pick and choose people. I try not to look at names. We've garnished friends, family, coworkers. It's, it's just part of what we have to do. So I did explain that process to her and that I, the tax administrator or collector, does not have the authority to release or refund any kind of fees. Anything like that has to come before the board. I did reach out to the school of government. Statute 105, 381 talks about release and refunds and board responsibility. So I did reach out to the school of government because that statute does not specifically talk about this type of fee, the garnishment fee. And on your paper near the bottom, I'm going to read to you, if that's okay, what, what the reply was. And it was that all fees and costs are covered by the restrictions on refunds and releases under 105, 381 because the term "tax" is defined in 105, 273 to include costs and fees. As a result, the garnishment fee may be released only if it were levied, levied due to illegality or clerical error, just like the principal taxes. Of course, the board retains the authority to make its own decision, and if the board orders you, or me, the tax collector, to release the tax, I should do so. The main concern would be one of equity. If the board is, releases the fee for one taxpayer and not all, might be considered favoritism or discrimination. I had asked about if the board chose to not use this remedy, the collection remedy, and we, we talked about then about that would be in my order to collect coming up in July. So the second page are the statutes that pertain to the action that took place with the garnishment. The first thing, of course, is the order of collection, which the board does each year before the tax bills go out. And then the second one, 105, 368, talks about procedure for attachment and garnishment. And 105, 381 discusses the taxpayers' remedies if they want to, the steps they need to, to go through if they want to appeal something. And that should be in writing, and I do not have a copy of that written request. If, if anyone has one, I do not have that copy. And then the last one, we talk about waiver of penalties and partial payments. Be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
How much is the fee?
$30. It's the same as a civil processing fee.
Is the fee split in any way as to the mailing of the registered letter?
No.
$24 for the administrative fee?
No, it's just, it's just the $30 fee, and that's any time we send certified mail.
Any questions? Any other questions? Recommendation?
I can't make a recommendation here. This is an appeal before the board.
Mr. Carter, any comment? Heather, any comment?
I tend to agree with the school of government, unfortunately, where, you know, if it's a process that we already have in place through the tax department to add this fee, I know there are unfortunate circumstances where sometimes people get caught because there's no way to keep up 100% with the address of some of these taxpayers, and the only option that the tax office has is to use information that they might find for employment. Is that 100% going to work? No. However, I cannot see that the tax office should waive a fee that, that administratively they should be charging to collect on delinquent taxes. I know there will be some people that get caught out with this and end up having to pay it. But unless you're going to waive it, I think for everybody, I can't see that it would be a good idea to waive it just for one individual and not everybody.
Thank you. Nick, John? Got a question. Is there any stipulation that the administrative fees must come from the taxpayer? Anybody pay that administrative fee?
Well, sure, anybody can pay part of the taxes.
It's done.
It's over with.
Any other questions or comments?
I agree with John. If he wasn't going to do it, I would.
There are many of these fees that get charged every year, that's all I'll say.
Yeah, you might be getting something started. You better have a bunch of 30s.
Take the money. It's over with. There's a.
One other thing, Rita. I forget through here. Will you see if you got Mr. Carter on his tax question?
I will, I will talk about that, the present use value program is pretty in-depth and, but I will, I will check in, check in on that, yes.
Okay, so this item is on the agenda for action. There needs to be a motion in a second. If not, the item dies. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that she accepts the payment as presented.
What's the motion? Drew?
Make that motion not to waive.
Need a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? The motion stay, states not to waive the garnishment fees. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries 4-1.
Take your money, Rita. I don't want to walk up.
Do you mind just coming upstairs and doing that when you finish here? Sorry. We don't like taking money out of the office, but thank you.
On camera? Item under Section D for action, item number three, update fire commission resolution of their claim.
So you'll see.
Page 26 through 29.
You'll see this, the sections that have been amended or the highlighted in yellow. That first section is, "The commission shall choose its own secretary, and the secretary shall be responsible for keeping minutes of the meetings, which shall be kept by the clerk of the Board of Commissioners." I think that was a suggestion from the last meeting. The other one is now on page 27, under. The other one is now on page 27, under Section 3, Item C, which says, "No person with a felony conviction shall serve on any fire department. A background check may be performed by the commission, and the result of any check shall not be used in any way which is not related to the job performance by a fireman and shall be used in a way that is consistent with the requirements of the performance of the duties of firemen." Now, the reason it's worded that way is specifically because of Title VII claims. Can I say 100% whether this would prohibit or prevent a claim under Title VII? No. Unfortunately, it's going to be the actions of the commission and anyone in their use of that background check. That's what would determine whether there would be a claim or not. So we can't really remedy that. That still can come up. It still can be an issue. It's just going to depend on individual circumstances.
Your recommendation is to include this?
It's language, yes. But does that preclude it? No, unfortunately. And I don't think there's any amount of language that we could include which would preclude there from the possibility of a claim. It just depends on how the information is used.
Mr. Carter?
Just a question for April. What does a background check cost?
Well, excuse me. The ones that we do for employees, they're actually $24.
The only reason I bring that up is if we start doing this, there is no budget line for this item. So it would have to be a consideration of the board to amend the budget to accommodate. Now, sitting here, I don't know how many we're going to look at or anything as that goes by the resolution. But just keep in mind that there is a cost involved in doing that background check.
How do you select a person? Are you going to do a background check on everybody that's in the firefighting department right now?
I think most of the fire departments do their own background check, except for one, and maybe they've started. They do their own background check.
Can you do it that way?
I think that's up to the commission. It's just, it's an option, and it would depend on what the commission currently does, you know. And if the fire departments are individually doing it, you know, this is just a follow-up for the resolution for the commission to say it is something that would be allowable. But if they're already doing it, that's individual for each fire department. You know, each fire department's going to have their own bylaws, and they've set up how they're operating. So this is the commission that is the overall, meeting with each chief and, you know, to determine what happens with the fire department. So this would just be something that the commission would say is authorized. But I think individually, if each fire department is doing something based on what their bylaws are, I'm not familiar with each of their bylaws.
Any other comment or questions? Michelle?
I've got one. I'm with Heather on this. This is a slippery slope. Open yourself up to determination issues. The county could get sued over this. And, you know, I'm a firm believer, too, that what if you're 18 years old and a day old, 18 years and a day old, and you mess up? And now you're 50 years old, and you want to, you've paid your penance, and you want to serve your community and be a productive member of your community, but you're... of this. I have a hard time with that. I mean, God forgives everybody, no matter what. And, you know, I don't see how serving your community, fighting a fire, unless you're a convicted arsonist or something like that, or murderer, rapist, you know, if you have a felony conviction for, you know, something that is totally not related to fighting fires, I just, I just think that sets a bad tone. I can't support it.
On?
I could see a need for this for anyone that was handling the finances of a volunteer fire department. Whenever I was working down on the East Coast, we had a fire chief that eventually went to prison because he was taking a little money out of the kitty. So, you know, as Commissioner Luthman said, it's a slippery slope, especially now. I mean, my God, in some cities, you can get by with just about murder. We had a man on the, in New York City, that was slashed from the top of his head to the bottom of his jaw. And all he did was talk a young man out of doing something, and he comes around and cuts it. Guess what? Before he got out of the hospital getting stitches, that man was out of jail. He's not going to see the court. So this is a strange time for me. I could see a need if they're handling money. That is something you really need to know, a background investigation, so whoever's handling the proceeds. But I'm ambivalent about it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, did something like this, would this be, you know, who's on the fire department now? Would they be required to go back and check everybody's there now?
I guess it would just depend on what did the commission want to do? And had the fire departments previously been doing checks, you know, and can they say, "We've done it. We've complied," or "We feel like we've complied"? This is not a requirement. I mean, it says, "No person with a felony," but then on the background, it says they might, they may be able to do it. I mean, we can change the language if the board isn't comfortable with that. I mean, we can modify that language to whatever you are comfortable with, meaning if it's just going to be in connection with someone handling money, you know, or it's going to be left up to individual fire departments. I mean, I don't know. And that's something that you have to give me guidance on what your thoughts are, you know, based on what I've explained and concerns that, you know, you all have. If there's a difference, you know, that you want to delineate, that's what this is for, for us to make that determination now.
I think what's my concern is a felony. You know, you can, these folks can be charged with taking game on federal lands and can be, if they're found guilty, they have a felony. So I guess the description of what, you know, so you get in this situation, well, you think that person is still capable of being a fireman? So, yeah, I think it's a little bit in the gray here. It could be, could complicate things.
Corrigan, any comment? My question is, are there different degrees of felons? I mean, you can be a felon if you've done. What would be the minor thing to be classified as a felon?
Well, but it could be dependent on the number of minor crimes you've committed. And then it would automatically raise to a felony because of the smaller things. They just add up now, and you've been bumped up. So it's not just that there's, I mean, there are base levels of what could be a felony, but then you could be committing misdemeanors, and then it raised to a felony because of the number that you have. So I don't know. It varies all over. I mean, there's no, I mean, unless it's a very specific type of action or crime that you're talking about, you know. So it could be a lot of different things.
If you drive yourself to work and get caught 10 times for driving without a license, they could raise it to a felony.
Depends on the DA's office.
But you've got to get to work.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I just think we open ourselves up. You know, what if you have a minority who wants to use this and say, "Oh, you're not, you're not letting me in the fire department because I'm a woman," or "I'm a different race"? They might have some grounds to have some wiggle room with this.
And that was the exact language, which, there's an article that I was directed to by the school of government. And in that, obviously, they're talking about the qualifications under Title VII, which is gender, race. It's a list. And I don't know, unless there is an actual policy like the county has for county employees and how that information might be used, you know, I think if you're going to include this, then you need to actually have a policy behind it, which then you could use to support yourself if there was a Title VII claim. Because this is very vague, and if you're just including this, then you're still open to the possibility of a possible claim. Because you have no idea how this information is going to be used in connection with determining, I mean, obviously, a felony conviction is obvious, but how you use that information to determine whether someone qualifies as a fireman, you have no policy for that. And you're leaving it open to complete interpretation, and that's where the problem is. So if you're going to include this, I think you have to have a policy behind it to back up how you're going to use that information to prevent there being an issue with a Title VII claim.
Additional comments or questions? My comment, is this an item that needs to be tabled to do some more research? Or is it something that the board wants to vote on right now? Mr. Carter, do you have a comment?
With what we've heard today, I think it, and I know Heather would hopefully agree, I think we need to do a little more research on it before it gets tabled or voted on at this point.
I won't make a motion to table until the mid-month, July meeting.
Got a motion in a second.
Second. I would like to say, though, I would, I would like to hear from you, you know, what are your thoughts? I mean, if that means you email whatever, I want some thoughts from the board as to how do you feel we should move forward with this? I mean, it's not just, you know, my thoughts on it. I mean, and potentially having a more detailed plan, you know, or background to this, you know, what are your thoughts? Should we move forward? How should we word this? What are your concerns? I mean, it's a lot more involved than let's just add a sentence or two, because we're not really addressing the underlying problems that could come up from this. So that's why I'd like a little bit more information from you and direction and your thoughts. And it might help to have a dialogue where we can go back and forth and determine that. And one of the things that Michael just saw was that there's a new state law that says if you're going to do a background check, it requires you to be fingerprinted and go through the SBI, which is an additional charge. So I don't know if that's part of what the county does now, but that is something that we need to also consider, too. And I wouldn't mind if we had the information from the individual fire departments about them actually already performing these background searches.
See what I can find out. I've got a meeting with them next Monday.
Perfect. So that we have some more information to go on ourselves.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor in a second to table this to the mid, until July's mid-month meeting. Any discussion? I need, all those in favor of tabling, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries five oh. And Heather, you said for the individual board members to contact you, or should it go through Michael, and then Michael contacts you?
Well, I think, no. On this one, we can all be on a group tech, or a group email. And then that way, everybody sees the questions, and then we can comment on it. And I think that will be helpful because we're all asking some questions at the same time and then bringing up comments. And if we keep that going, I think that might help clarify what we're actually looking for.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item. Item four, April Ham. You've got quite a few items, April.
I do have quite a few. The first one is the restructured pay grade plan. This reflects the changes that were approved in the fiscal year 2324 budget with the approval. And I also, this also includes adding an accounting technician that was in the budget also at a grade 62, but starting pay $38,391. Also adds the maintenance supervisor for public works that was done a couple of months ago. And a restructuring of the lead transfer facility specialist, just to make it cohesive with the transfer facility and the public works. That's the only reason that one's highlighted. Everything else reflects the $4,000 starting salary increase that was in the budget.
Any questions? I need a motion, second.
Motion to approve under General Prisus for Action 4A and B, I believe. That's correct, isn't it?
In a second.
He's second.
Motion in a second. Wait for Drew, just a second. Okay. All those in favor of approval, raise your hand. All those opposed, likewise, motion carries.
I do, I do have the job description for the account tech on B.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Go ahead. Items C through K, are they not the end-of-the-year transfer of funds, which is a normal process?
No, sir. These are lines that have gone in the negative that we need to, we need to talk about just a little bit.
Very well.
Yeah. You'll be seeing those after July 1, payroll, for example. We're going to have a split payroll, so you're going to see that, and you're going to see adjustments to payroll. Because salary is on a, on a calendar year, but we're actually on a fiscal year, so you always see those adjustments.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
My hopes for shortening have just been dashed.
I'm sorry.
Any comments, Mr. Carter? Okay. Need a motion in a second.
I have no motion.
It's already been, already done.
We got a vote.
Got a vote. Next.
We got a vote. We got a motion in a second. So we got a vote.
Okay. I thought he said it had been done. All those in favor of number seven of approval, 4A and B. All those opposed?
Opposed, I'm for.
The first one we have is a line on transfer for DSS. This is to cover professional services. In that line is like their attorney fees and things of that sort, supplies and materials, and auto expense. So we, they do have the money available within their budget. We're just asking to move that money around.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
In a second. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Next.
I believe the next one is EMS. Okay. We're covering part-time salaries, where they have been down some full-time staff. They were down three at one point. So we're covering part-time salaries, emergency overtime salaries, auto expense, which is fuel, and longevity for the year. And they do have the money available.
Second. A motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five oh. Next.
Okay. The next one is for law enforcement and the detention center, covering the jail meals, food and provisions, covering overtime for the sheriff's department, because they have been down some full-time and part-time employees, to cover part-time for detention, overtime for detention, and adding some more transfer in money for inmate canteen expenses. The money is available, but we are using law enforcement and detention center budget. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that one, so.
I'll make a motion on this.
Okay.
The line on.
Yeah.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Sorry, can you bring the other one up on the screen then, Drew?
Any office building, property and liability line action.
Okay. This is to cover county office building repairs, of course, the work that's going on at 90 South Main. And then property and liability insurance, it came in more than expected for this current fiscal year. So you have the transfers, transfers there in front of you. And I believe all this money is available. I know the workers' comp is available and the unappropriated fund balance.
Motion in a second. So move. A motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Next.
Okay. The next one is animal control. And this is basically to hopefully cover the last quarterly bill that we'll have from the animal shelter. the animal shelter. And all that money is available.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same. Motion carries.
Okay. The next one that I have is the transfer facility for fuel. This is basically to cover the fuel at the transfer facility and that money is available.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five oh. Next.
And in the public works budget, we need to cover some utilities, utilities expense, uniforms, the propane at the BDC library, Wilkes Community College complex, and some auto expense, which is going to cover fuel cost. And then we have the lines that, that money is available for that request.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Next.
Okay, the next one's just a little bit more in-depth. And I do have law enforcement, I think we have Shane and Sandra both here, if we have any questions. Back in '21, when we, when the county received the first allocation of the American Rescue Funds, the board had a consensus to fund five law enforcement vehicles. Well, as we all know, going through the pandemic, there was delays in vehicles, you couldn't find vehicles. In my documentation, I actually put a copy of that original work session, okay, with my notes. We have bought two of those vehicles. There was some law enforcement DPS funding that was actually received that next fall. And one of those vehicles was bought through that funding that they already had in, in process. We have bought another vehicle with ARPA funds. And then we upgraded, I believe, a vehicle that they already had and then a used vehicle that was bought. Does all that sound correct?
The used vehicle?
Yes.
The used vehicle, which is the 2012 Charger?
Yeah.
I think that may have been bought out of the drug fund.
It was bought out of the drug fund, but the outfit was done with ARPA funds.
Okay.
Is what I'm, okay, all right. So basically, there's three vehicles left that there's been a consensus from the board to buy.
Many years ago, this been the consent?
It was 2021. It was, well, let me, let me back up. It was the first allocation of the ARPA funds. But we, but the discussion was had when we were going through the process of the 2223 budget. So this, this paperwork that I included was actually a work session, probably, it wasn't too long after we received those first ARPA funds, but going into that 2223 budget. So it has been a while. But now, here, fast forward to today, they have four vehicles available that were requested back at that point.
Have we got the money for these four vehicles?
We can, one is going to be a replacement for a total vehicle. So that is the budget amendment that you're going to have right here in front of you in just a second, is a budget amendment to amend because we, we've had a couple of vehicle accidents and we have insurance proceeds available to add to that line to fund one of the vehicles. I just wanted to make the board aware that this has changed a little bit from the consensus that has happened previously because the, the cost of the vehicles have gone up about $11,000 from the original conversation that we had with the board. The original, the original five that was requested at the 220,000, you're talking 44, 45,000. The invoices that you have in front of you, they're now 55,326. So to fund the three vehicles, we're talking about $166,500 coming out of ARPA. And then we're going to fund one with the budget amendment from the insurance proceeds from a total vehicle, actually, probably a couple of different insurance proceeds.
Where'd you say this money was coming from for these vehicles?
The American Rescue Plan funds that the county started receiving in '21.
So we got the money already for?
We do have that money.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, we have the money.
The federal government.
It's just a change from what the original conversation was with the board.
Any other questions? The money is there.
The money is there. Yes.
There's no budget change.
I make a motion to approve amendment number 11.
Okay.
Got a motion and need a second. Motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, and then the last one I have is transfer facility with disposal fees. We are going in the negative on this disposal fee line, but we have brought in more income. So what we're seeing with increased usage of the transfer facility, we do have those revenues available to add to that. So that's what I'm asking with that budget amendment.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five oh. Mr. Carter?
Just before we get into manager comments, I'm gonna look out in the audience and I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate, has there been a, been a change in the sheriff's department that perhaps we ought to make an introduction for? You probably need to come up.
Hold up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know that there was a need for an introduction. I think everybody here knows me. So Shane Lynn, I'll be replacing Nick as the chief deputy of the sheriff's office. Look forward to working with y'all.
Glad to see you. Nice of you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a good one.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our condolences.
Maybe congratulations. So that, that concludes our general business for action. Next is item C, county manager's building inspection report, page 51. Mr. Carter?
Chairman of members of the board, you have that inspection report attachment. I encourage you to look at that. I have a couple of other comments. Mr. Spicer commented on the workday out at DSS on Friday. I'd just like to again capitalize on that. I think we had great turnout, great participation, great interaction and an unmeasurable team building experience. So I think those are productive workdays and I think that's our third one now and we're going to continue that trend. The next item is the boomerang group, which the board selected to do the potential outdoor pool site study. Have pretty much concluded their initial study and the recreation committee hopefully will be meeting with them later this week to review what they have submitted and provide comments. The next one is, and I think Mr. Spicer commented in reference to this, but we have the roof bid out for 90 South Main right now. Those bids are due back this Friday, so we will see what kind of numbers or interest we have in that. The next item is, and I'll look at Drew when I say this, this potentially could be Drew's last board meeting until maybe sometime later as she is getting close. So we certainly wish you the best of luck in, in that. And that's pretty much what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do commissioner comments and start them with John.
The only thing that I'd like to say is every now and then, there is going to be times whenever common sense and the law is not going to agree. So I'll rectify one. Don't anybody think that I'm going to do it in the future because I was born poor, I will die poor. That's it.
Thank you. Michelle?
I was able to take a tour of the DS, the new DSS building. This was prior to, we had our board meeting that Tuesday or that Monday, and I think you guys worked on it that Friday. But going to be a great facility for them and it, I think that it has really upped the morale there a lot. So that's great and I'm, I'm proud of the county employees coming out and working on the, working on getting some paint in there. So it needed it. But also very excited about meeting with the rec committee later this week and, you know, making the dream a reality for a pool for this county. You know, they're going to come back with some recommendations for us and hopefully put some, some dollars to it. And I'm hoping it's something we can swing because the kids really need it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good day. Thank you. Emmy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I actually went up by the, their work team build the other day and tell you there in person, you don't, you don't really realize when he talks about, when he gathers a lot of the employees, county employees together to do that. And it's, it's pretty incredible. And I just wanted to say thank you to what you, your ideas to even bring that together. And then I think, even though it's work, I think the employees actually enjoy that. And I think it's, it's a, it's a good off from what they usually do every day. But I want to thank you and all the employees that participated because that's a really neat thing that I don't believe a lot of counties do. That's probably a, a special thing. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. Just a few comments. I think when we start discussing the BDC building, I, I think there should be some discussion with Wilkes Community College about a long-term lease agreement. I believe that would need to be a 30-year agreement. And at that point, the state board would be able, it's my understanding, the state board would be able to help with some of the finances for that section of the building. And now that we have Dr. Cox, a local, local person that's in charge of the state board, we might, might have a good contact there. So I want to be sure that we utilize that. It's my understanding, we have a temporary, or interim superintendent that will start September the first at the Allegheny County School System. That would be Missy Weaver. I think Timmy and I and the entire board look forward to discussions with her about the new addition to the high school, understanding that they're, they're very, very engaged in trying to get some type of plan laid out for this 47 million. So I hope to have a lot of discussions with them and this board in the future. With that, that's, that's all I've got to say. I do echo Michelle's comments about the swimming pool. I think it's going to be a process. We need to get started really, once we find out what type of budget we're looking at because there's a lot of opportunities out in the, out in the general public and in the state government for additional funds that, that we need to look at. And a lot of those are time-sensitive. We've already missed some of those for this year, but I would like to start looking at additional costs where it really puts as little a burden on the taxpayers of Allegheny as possible. With that being said, we need to move into request for closed session pursuant to GS 143-318-11A through four to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in this area served by the public. And I believe, Mr. Carter, we have one guest to include in a closed session.
Take a 10-minute.
That person will be included.
Mr. Chair, I would request a 15-minute interim so that we would have enough time to introduce ourselves to our new chief deputy.
15 minutes?
Hour and a half.
And disperse and replenish bodily fluids.
We will commence our closed session at five minutes till 12. Does she, 13 minutes?
AM or PM?
Good fellow.
Oh, you doing a barn or something?
I think it was holding off a good part of the day. Does it look like it's raining? Light rain?
Put it next for the four days.
Yes, sir.
It was bought out of the drug fund, but the outfit was done with ARPA funds. Is what I'm, okay, all right. So basically, there's three vehicles left that there's been a consensus from the board to buy.
How many chairs?
I'm surprised.
I see that coming.
I'm gonna run again.
If you watch them, they would have finished that in about four seconds. But yes, sir, anytime you need him, feel free to call me. Right. Don't hesitate. Yes, sir. That went on.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes.
And the Nick. I didn't know that.
George, you haven't changed it in a while, have you?
I've had that thing for 30 years.
Yeah, I think I've got.
Okay. All right, got you then. Congratulations. I'm surprised. I see that coming. I'm going to run again. Okay. Thanks.
How did you manage your sloths?
No wind situation.
And that's just a burp.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Just like giving you up.
I know, so I can hang on to it?
That's what we like.
I have no objections to that at all, sir. Just be aware that you got two Irwins and we're both deaf. I have been accused by my wife of turning them off at times.
How are you? I'll be yours.
I know who you are. Nice to see you. Jeff will do a good job in the system.
Thank you.
I would have been tickled if David had got to tell me. I was tickled, but.
I hope so.
I think you will.
Yeah.
Have his hands full.